Thank you. All right, call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Ms. Acomando?
Present.
Ms. Borelli? Mr. Ochello?
Here.
Ms. Ainello?
Present.
Ms. Laurentino? Ms. Roloff?
Here.
Ms. Torbic?
Present.
Ms. Traverso?
Here.
Ms. Adarelli?
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I had a quick notice that this meeting has been sent to all members of the Board of Education and to the Bergen Record in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, 1975. Okay. Mrs. Violetti?
Yes. Thank you. I do have a lot, so bear with me. I'm sure Mr. Crati is going to be talking more about facilities, but I just wanted to make everyone aware that our central office is scheduled to be moving over to Coolidge, hopefully by Friday of this week, which is located at 540 Saddle River Road. The directors and tech staff will be coming to our current offices. And where the directors have been, Room 124, it's already started to be converted into an additional classroom here at the middle school, high school. The other piece that I'm really excited about is our cafeterias have been repainted and new lighting, and now our new cafeteria furniture is scheduled to be delivered also this Friday. So, really excited about that. Our athletic field, it is, it's getting there. So, our home opener is Friday, September 5th at 7:00 PM. The theme is Falcon Pride. We're hoping to have a nice, big student section. We'll do some type of ceremony beforehand. We've been working on fixing up the press box. We're awaiting arrival of the digital scoreboard. We're getting the gate working in the back of the field for the FOB access. The fence has been completed. We cleared out a lot of the old shrubbery and some of the icky stuff that was in the back. The track has been lined. And the entrance to the athletic field, that's slated to be completed as well after they work on the front entrances of our middle school, high school. As far as you'll notice, we don't have student representatives to the board at this time. I will be sending something out the first week of school. And we'll be interviewing our students. And then we hope to have them at our September meeting. Transfer orientation at the middle school, high school is scheduled for 10:00 AM Tuesday, August 26. And our new teacher orientation is Wednesday and Thursday, August 27th and 28th, when we have the community bus tour the afternoon of the 28th. And that's always a fun time where we take them around our township, point out some highlights, and visit all our school buildings. Our staff does a report back to school the day after Labor Day. They have two professional development days. And then our students have a minimum day on Thursday and a full day on Friday. Our current open positions, the two big ones are middle school science and middle school math special education. So, we are actively searching for those two positions. And then we have some Paris and LunchAids opening as well. Some reminders that are going to be sent out to parents and some district updates include the following. So, we're going to remind our families that there's no motorized vehicles on school property. We've seen an uptake in electric e-bikes and e-scooters and things like that. They are not permitted on school property. We are going to continue with having Field Day for grades four to six at the middle school, high school field, taking into consideration all the feedback that we received from our families and staff as well. So, we're looking forward to having that be even better this year. We have our parent partnership nights. The first one's going to be Tuesday, November 18th. And then we have one in March and one in May. Acme has already, they're very generous. They've already sent out emails about providing us with more gift cards. And if anyone has any thoughts or sessions that they wish to have for these parent partnership nights, please send me an email. We are going to send out reminders to our parents and students about our Chromebook policy and the fines associated with losing a charger or a case, et cetera. And our tech department has started a new tagging process as well with our devices. New for next year in this building is there are going to be FOB access for the student bathrooms at the middle school, high school. So, currently, the doors are usually chocked open and staff is on duty outside. So, this will enable our doors to be closed and stay closed. And it also means that every student is going to have to have their ID on them in order to access the restroom. So, our students will be mandated to wear their IDs. Our high school students will have blue lanyards. Our middle school students will continue with the yellow lanyards. Our back-to-school night dates have already been shared out, so our principals will follow up with that. We're also going to change up our scholarship banquet. It's going to be a little bit different this coming year. We're not going to have it at a restaurant as our participation rate was declining a little bit. We are going to celebrate all of our senior students with a combination of an awards and a scholarship night here at the middle school, high school. So, that kind of eliminates an additional night out for our families of seniors at a very busy time of the year for them. Also, the plan right now is for all kindergarten, grade six, and grade eight promotions and celebrations to be indoor moving forward in our nice, air-conditioned gymnasiums that we did not always have. If we need to have an overflow area with live stream, we will do so. And then that allows high school graduation to remain in a special format outside on our athletic field here. We're also not going to be moving forward with a delayed opening for K-6 for state testing. So, this means that our testing in our elementary schools will be spread out a bit more across the month. But the feedback was it was an inconvenience for our families. We wanted to take that into account. The middle school, high school will continue to have a delayed opening for their week of state testing. Continuing, we're going to have no cell phones. AirPods, earbuds, headphones will not be permitted in our classroom. If a teacher sees them out, the teacher will be instructed to take them and bring them to the main office so the student can pick them up at the end of the day. And if the behavior continues, further consequences will occur. Our middle school students will be using their lockers. There'll be no backpacks allowed in the classrooms. They're taking up way too much space in our classrooms here. And there will be dress during bags will be acceptable instead. I also wanted to let the community know that we created a list of all different holidays throughout the school year. And it was shared with our principals, who will soon share it with their staff. It's impossible for our school to be closed for every holiday. However, we want to be respectful of all of our family celebrations. So, we're sharing these dates out with our teachers so that way they can work with these dates when scheduling their tests and homework, et cetera. Our parent portal is scheduled to be open next week. During the school year, parents will be able to use the parent portal to enter their child's attendance and upload documentation. If more than one day, then they are to contact either the nurse or the main office, however their school policy procedures align with. We're also continuing with our academic initiative. We need our students present in school. Absences affect the academic performance. It puts strains on the student, parents, and staff with making up work and ultimately hurts our district as a whole. But this also goes for tardies. Five unexcused tardies equate to one unexcused absence. We've had many students with attendance failures for Period One specifically in this building due to the conversion of tardies over to unexcused absences. As my father always told me, it never hurts to be 10 minutes early. So, we're going to try to pretend our school here starts at 7:50 and then hopefully be able to get here on time. Kindergarten preschool attendance also count. When you allow your child to stay home because they're tired or don't want to come to school, then that creates a pattern, the start of a pattern for them. I also wanted to let everybody know that in North Jersey right now, vote for sophomore TJ Filan. Voting will remain open until August 25th. It's for our high school football team. I will be sending this out to our parents in the following days and it looks like it's going to be a very long letter.
Thank you. Mr. Crati?
Okay, I gave a detailed report earlier today, but just to summarize for the public, we have many projects going on around the district. Some are in the general budget for this year. And some are still referendum products finishing up. So, over here at the middle school, high school, the track was recoded and re-lined with color exchange zones. On the front here, referendum, we're working on, you'll see work being done. That's the front canopies and renovations. You should see the steel start getting erected on Thursday and Friday, tomorrow and the next day. Then they'll start in the back, athletic field entrance doing a similar project. At all the schools, we had either the, all the boilers replaced or the second or backup boiler replaced. So, all the boilers will be on the newer end versus having like a 1984 and '87 boiler. The oldest one will be 2016.
You know, some consider that retro.
Retro, yeah. It was kind of retro.
Retro.
Again, with the referendum, we had three schools here, Franklin and Long. There were three sections of the roof that needed to get renovated. The reason we couldn't do them last summer is because we had to remove the solar panels. So, we had to coordinate that with the solar company. So, that was being done here. So, they removed the panels. The roof gets completed, and then the panels get put back on the roof. At Smith, we're waiting for the install date for a front entrance awning. At Washington School, a couple of referendum products. We had the ceiling and lighting done on the first and second floor as well as three classrooms. That's all completed. And we're waiting for windows for the school to get delivered next week. Installation will start around the first week of September. That's all the windows in the front of the building, both floors and the sides. And if you want your last pictures of the orange panels, please take them now because they will go to blue. Coolidge School, the interior renovations are completed. We had the roof replaced. That was done. The parking lots repaved. And we're looking to move in, like Mrs. Violetti said, on Friday. I think that summarizes the little project. If anybody has any questions on the board, please let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm good. I'm good. I thought you had a question. Okay, so, Mrs. Violetti is going to do a presentation for us on...
It's going to be super quick.
Okay.
So, we're mandated to report results of our state testing to the Board of Education within a specific timeframe. Unfortunately, in the summer, it's difficult to have our testing coordinator and our directive curriculum to attend the meetings due to their schedules. So, we are going to have formal presentations at the September Board of End Meeting. But I did share a one summary slide with the board. You do have access to it. This is for the access for ELLs, English Language Learners. We had 70 students tested across grades K through 12. And the access for Ls goes by levels. Level one are students that are entering the country for the first time. And then level six is the highest. In order to test out of ESL, you need to score a 4.5 or higher. So, that's all of level six and all of level five, and then most of level four. And then you are, you almost consider like on a watch list for a year where the ELL teacher does collaborate with the classroom teacher to make sure the student doesn't fall behind. We did have, after this testing, we did have a total of 12 students that were exited from our ESL program.
Now, that was really quick. Thank you. Does anybody wish to comment on agenda items? Then we'll have to open it all, right? Okay, good. Okay, so, we're going to move right along. For board action items, can I have a motion to approve B2526.5 through B2526.11?
Second.
I need a motion in a second. Both Michaels.
Okay. Most of these are mandated items. We do have our district goals for next school year. We are going to continue with our attendance and include tardiness in there because, as I mentioned in my updates, our tardies are really affecting our attendance rates. We're also going to implement something that's called instructional rounds to strengthen mathematics instruction. So, our math scores are on the lower side this year, this past year. So, we are going to put together instructional rounds. It was a team of varied individual staff members across the district. You focus on one or two specific math instructional items. And then you go into classrooms across the district when they're teaching math for maybe 15 to 20 minutes, and you just observe. And then you kind of debrief together, as objective as you can be, put what you observed. And then you all work together as a team to figure out what our staff and our programs need and our students need in order to experience more success in mathematics instruction, sort of like to guide our professional development across the district and our family engagement across the district. And the third goal is, again, based upon our low science state testing scores, although this was something that definitely was across the county because I attended a county meeting on this. And we are going to have our third goal be to increase our scores on the state assessment with science. And then you'll also see on there the board, the board goals. So, the board goals, I don't know if you want to share? You want me to share the board goals?
I don't have them.
Oh. So, the board goals, they're going to participate in a minimum of three community events. I'm not going to read the entire. I'll just give a quick summary. The second one is to encourage student voice and engagement by having students attend Board of Education meetings and share presentations that highlight their learning experiences, achievements, and classroom initiatives. And then the third, which I really love, is to host meet and greet events with the community and the board trustees several times throughout the school year. So, those are the goals that are listed for approval. And then everything else here is mandated. The bilingual waiver, what that is, is if you have more than 20 students speaking the same language, same foreign language in your district, then you are supposed to be hosting a bilingual program for them in district. What this waiver is, is that if those 20 students are across grade levels K through 12, it'd be very difficult to implement that program. So, that's what the waiver is for. Any questions?
Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ochello?
Yes.
Ms. Ainello?
Yes.
Ms. Roloff?
Yes.
Ms. Traverso?
Yes.
Ms. Adarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Acomando?
Yes.
Ms. Torbic?
Yes.
Education and curriculum, Ms. Ainello?
Okay. At the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following items, E2526.1 through E2526.14.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, so, the field trips listed here are the grades four to six taking the bus over to the middle school, high school for their field day in the spring. The new staff community bus tour. Outdoors club here at the middle school, high school, they have their first trip on here. And then the track team, they go to Six Flags every year. So, those are the field trips on here. Next, you'll see the code of conducts. Those have to be approved every year. They are not new. The curriculum has to be approved every year. You'll see down at the bottom, math curriculum. You only see one, two, and four because K, three, five, and six are still being worked on. So, they should be on September's agenda. All our math curriculum has to be revised to align with our new math program. The memorandum of understanding between the University of Delaware and Saddle Brook High School, that's our entrepreneurship elective here. And this allows the dual enrollment so our students can get college credits. Out of district placements has to be approved every year. Our service providers are approved every year. Point 13, the Algebra with Financial Applications, that's a new course that we're looking to host here at the high school. It's for our special education students to allow them to take a more appropriate third-year math course. And then point 14 is just a list of our special education programs across the district. They are to be approved each year by the Board of Education.
Thank you. Through the chair? Can I ask a question? What is the math series that we're working with now?
K-6 is now Go Math.
Go Math? Thank you. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Ochello?
Yes.
Ms. Ainello?
Yes to all, but in E2526.1, the field trips, I'm going to abstain from number one.
Okay. Ms. Roloff?
Yes.
Ms. Traverso?
Yes.
Ms. Adarelli?
Yes.
Ms. Acomando?
Yes.
Ms. Torbic?
Yes.
Budget and finance, Ms. Traverso?
At the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following items, BF2526.1 through BF2526.14.
Second.
Any questions?
The workshops are essentially all fall annual workshops. One is our art teacher, some of our principals, our school nurse, and guidance counselor. So, they're put in to attend their organization's annual workshop. And then the door access controls is on here. The point 14, that's the local recreation improvement grant. That's going to be used to fund our K-6 playgrounds, which hopefully will be able to get done relatively soon.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Ochello?
Yes.
Ms. Ainello?
Yes to all, but in BF2526.2, I'm going to abstain from check numbers 3871, 4289, 4568, 4744, 67152, 67396. Also...
Did you get them all?
Yep.
Okay.
So, in BF2526.4, from the workshops, I'm going to abstain from item number two and six. Yes to everything else.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Roloff?
I'm going to abstain from check number 67204, and yes to all.
Okay. Ms. Traverso?
Yes.
Ms. Adarelli?
Yes.
Ms. Acomando?
Yes to all, except for BF2526.2. I'm going to abstain from check number 67243.
And Ms. Torbic?
Yes to all, but BF2526.3, abstaining from check number 67136.
Okay.
So, we have facilities and operations. Mr. Ochello?
At the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following item, F2526.1.
Second.
Questions? Fine.
Nope. No questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Ochello?
Yes.
Ms. Ainello?
Yes.
Ms. Roloff?
Yes.
Ms. Acomando?
Yes.
Ms. Traverso?
Yes.
Ms. Adarelli?
Yes.
Ms. Torbic?
Yes.
Okay. Policy, Ms. Adarelli?
Okay. At the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following items. Approve for first reading of the following policies and regulations, PO1.2526.1 all the way to P5440. Nope, sorry. P164815.
Can I have a second? Should I read it now?
Yeah, why don't you read it now?
Okay. For the policy committee, there was a meeting on July 29th. It was a Strauss-Sesmey update. Many of these policies are mandated as they updated the New Jersey Administrative Code. There is a new student sun protection policy that the governor signed into law. This states that students are able to bring sunscreen to school and apply it when outside. Only they can apply it. Then our current policy states students in grades five and up are permitted to ride their bikes to school. We are recommending changing this to grades four and up. Student achievement and class rank still included quality grade points, of which are no longer being used. We use the weighted GPA, so these are updated to reflect this practice.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Can we have a second on the motion?
Yes, I second.
Okay. We got a couple. Thank you, guys. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ochello?
Yes.
Ms. Ainello?
Yes.
Ms. Roloff?
Yes.
Ms. Traverso?
Yes.
Ms. Adarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Acomando?
Yes.
Policies. Ms. Torbic?
Yes.
Okay, so, we have no negotiations. I'll read this one since... Personnel, we have, can I get a motion to approve P2526.2 through...
Motion.
Let me say all of them. That's the last number.
Sorry, Vic.
It's okay. Wait, I have to get to the last page. Sorry.
Motion.
Anybody have any questions?
Point two is our resignations and one retirement from the district. Then we have our leave as an absentee. So, I'm going to go to point four, appointments. Number one was revised because we needed a substitute nurse for our ESY program. So, she was added. Then we have some Para Professionals. Number six is an LDTC because our current one is retiring October 1st. Para, then we have ABCBA Leave Replacement. One of our BCBA's is going on maternity leave. Para, number 10 is a nurse for Washington School. Number 11 is an elementary ESL teacher for Franklin School. Number 12 is a full-year kindergarten leave replacement. Actually, this person is here, I see. And she was one of our Ramapo Clinical Interns last year. She completed her internship with Ms. D. over at Long School in kindergarten. And now she's going to have the full-year leave replacement. It voted for approval for this coming school year. Number 13 is an evening custodian after the 90 days per their contract. They're listed. And then we have a LunchAid. I believe that's Franklin School, another LunchAid at the end, and two other Paris. For our stipends, we have our co-assistant boys soccer coach. Mr. Klein is stepping down from being the high school yearbook advisor. And Ms. Anderson's going to step up to the task. And then we have some rescinding from our color guard and marching bands. We hired new ones. Number five, she used to do this several years ago. She got pregnant, and now she's coming back. She was very excited to come back. I explained already to the board the physical forms for the summer, the second shift. They have an assistant girls lacrosse coach. And then we're rescinding that staff member from the React Club, Middle School React Club, because she resigned from her current position. Point six, we have salary revisions, movement on the guide. Point seven, we're continuing with our Ramapo College internship program partnership with Ramapo College because, as you can see, it's being quite successful and beneficial to our district. And then point eight is to continue to give me authority to hire over the summer because, as I said, our two big positions right now that are still open are middle school science and middle school math special education. So, I would like to be able to offer them the job before our September board meeting.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Ochello?
Yes.
Ms. Ainello?
Yes to all, but I'm going to abstain in P2526.5, item numbers one, nine, and 11. Yes to everything else.
Okay. Ms. Roloff?
Yes.
Ms. Traverso?
Yes to all, except I will abstain from P2526.4, number 15.
Ms. Adarelli?
Yes.
Ms. Acomando?
Yes.
Ms. Torbic?
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody have any committee reports? Okay. Liaison reports, probably not summer, but I'm going to ask. You do, okay.
All right. So, we received an email today just for the Bergen County School Boards Association, the meeting schedule. So, in case you didn't see it, there is one on Monday, September 29th. It's a hybrid, but it's also going to be located at the Holiday Inn in Hasbrook Heights. I think that's the one we usually attend. We want to make plans for that. Then Thursday, December 4th. And that location is also going to be hybrid. And the location for that meeting is at Eric S. Smith's Middle School in Ramsey. Then on Thursday, February 12th, at 6:45, that is a virtual meeting. And then Thursday, May 28th, 6:00 PM, also a hybrid. And that will be at Emerald Park Memorial High School. So, if we want to make an arrangement for us to go, keep that on our calendars. Depending on snacks, yes.
Thank you. Anybody else have any liaison reports? Okay. Any correspondence? Any old business?
I actually do have, I guess, somewhat of correspondence. So, the township did email me today. The library, if you recall, last year, the public library across the street, they were having some issues with some of our students over there. So, they were talking about hiring some type of security for an hour or so after school. So, I was talking to Mr. Lidico or emailing with Mr. Lidico about maybe offering that up to one of our staff members to see if one of our staff members would be willing to go there and the library would pay for the staff member. to go there and the library would pay for the staff member. But behind it was that the students know our teachers, the teachers know our students. And I'm not sure that's going to happen, but I told Mr. Lidico that we could talk about it, just so that the board is aware. We are going to have a meeting with the library so that way we can discuss it further.
Great idea. There was no old business, right? Any new business?
New business?
Uh huh. Yes, sir.
Okay. I'd like, well, first of all, the schools look great. So thank you to the custodial staff, especially Phil for posting it every day on Facebook.
The floors.
Yeah, they look great. All the work being done looks great. Congratulations to the young lady who just got approved. I don't know if you guys know of Mr. Tony Gatto, but he passed away today.
Name sounds familiar.
So he's been in the community a long, long time, fire department, zoning board, all that fun stuff. And to the parents that have kids going away to school, good luck. It's not going to be easy.
Oh, yours is going away. That's right.
And welcome back.
I can't remember. Thank you. Anybody else?
Nope.
Okay. Does anybody want to make any comments?
Nope.
Nope. Okay, so I'm not going to open the meeting. Do you want me to open it and close it?